I call this meeting to order. This is a legally constituted meeting of the Town of Chi-Li Planning Board. You'll notice how this meeting has been posted in the Gates Chi-Li News and on the bulletin board in the front vestibule of the town hall. If you could please silence or turn off all phones and pagers, and please stand. Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, and just for all. In the event of an emergency, please use the exits in the front and the rear of the room. You will proceed with the agenda and the order in which it was published unless otherwise noted. Please, when called, please proceed to the podium, state your name if you are a representative and applicant, indicate the applicant's name, review the details of the application. Planning Board members and side table participants will address questions and concerns to the applicant or their representative in the public hearing portion of the meeting upon completion of comments from the board and the side table. Anyone wishing to comment on the application will be heard. If you wish to speak, please wait to be recognized by the chairperson, stand, state your name and address for the record. Please speak so all can hear you and your comments are speech. Please state your name and address for the record, please speak so all can hear your comments and address all kinds and questions to the chairperson. I'll now introduce the board members and side table participants. My friend left is still offended. Matt Emmons has been excused. Al Hallaby. I'm Mike Nyhan. Glenn Hyde. David Cross has been excused. And Paul Bloscher. At our side table is our Planning Board Council Matthew Piston, our Department Manager, Paul Wenzunreid, and our Town Engineer Michael Hanscom. Our recording secretary tonight is Sandra Hewlett. Our first application tonight is the application of Miller Transportation Group, Mark Miller, 1824 Route 38, Lumberton, New Jersey, 08048. Boliva Concrete Products Inc., PO Box 24581, Rochester, New York, 14624, owner, for preliminary site plan approval for a special use permit to allow an operation of a large trucking, rental leasing company of property located at 245 Paul Road, Rochester, New York, 14624 in the LI District.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Austin Goodwin, representative of Passaro Associates. I'm here on behalf of our client, Miller Truck Leasing. Representative for that is Mr. Mark Miller. Unfortunately, he was unable to attend tonight, so what he gave me in his stead is the PowerPoint that I handed all of you a few minutes ago before the meeting, just so we can go through that together, so I can provide you a little background on his company and their professionalism that they're trying to bring to Rochester. If you don't mind, I'd like to go through that first before the comment letter that I received from Lou, if that's all right with you.
No.
Yes. There's one extra one, I believe, up there on the desk in case someone else came in. So, quickly going through where this project is, as you already know, it is 245 Paul Road, which is very close to the southwestern corner of Monroe County International Airport. The reason that this site is, we're looking for, is that Boliva Concrete is going to be closing its doors, leaving a vacant site in the limited industrial district that Miller Trucking wants to come in and use to provide their service to the city of Rochester. Miller Leasing started as Miller Ford about 1912, over 100 years ago, in the New Jersey area. In 1967, they started expanding, moved to their current location on Route 38 in Mount Holly, New Jersey. And over that 110 years, Miller has expanded from just car dealerships to the largest independent full-service truck leasing company on the East Coast. They succeeded because Miller prides themselves on their distinction and their service to their customers. A little bit about their corporate structures, that there is six branches. The one that we are talking about today is Miller Truck Leasing, which does full-service commercial truck rental, lease and maintenance programs, along with their dedicated shop programs. The Miller Company as a whole, over that 100 years, has expanded to grow to over 850 employees across the East Coast and over 5,700 vehicles in their fleet. What they do at Miller Truck Leasing is, they mostly compete with Ryder and Penske. Their main difference is being a private organization, they are much smaller, much more independent, and they don't rent to the public, as in, none of us could go to Miller Truck Leasing and go rent a 26-foot box truck for our personal use. They are commercial only. And what they do is, they are a complete service fleet for any local business, say, pick a business, Whole Foods, any of the food rental, or any of the food distribution teams. They provide these trucks to them, so they don't have to maintain their own equipment, their own mechanics, and their own logistics divisions. So, any company can come to them, lease a truck of any size, anything from a van to a 26-foot super hauler, and they can have their company logo put on the side, they lease this truck to have it into their fleet for whatever they need it for. Anytime it needs maintenance, it needs repair, anything happens to it, it goes back to Miller Leasing to the site at 245 Paul Road for regular maintenance, oil change, tire changes, any issues, any cosmetic damage, they will maintain it on that site and then bring it back to their client. Trucks, the truck parks at the operator's facilities only when it needs a repair or any of this maintenance done, so there will not be a massive fleet of trucks sitting by the airport. It will only be a vehicle that needs service, brought in as soon as possible, brought back to the client as soon as possible. The next shows a couple shop pictures of their facilities in other areas. You can see their facilities are very clean, they pride themselves on that, they want their trucks to look clean for their clients, they want their facility to look just as clean, not only for the client but for the towns that they operate in. As well as clean facilities, the average age of that fleet is three years old. So you will not see old rusted-out box trucks driving around town, covered in salt damage. They take a lot of pride in maintaining that fleet, and any fleet vehicle that goes over the age of six, seven years and is starting to show wear and tear that they can't reliably maintain for a customer, that vehicle is sold off. The shop locations, you can see a lot of dots along New Jersey, as you'd expect from a New Jersey originating company, and they've started to expand all over the East Coast. There is a gap in Rochester and Syracuse. The reason for that is that Deckeroy is shutting down, I apologize if I did not pronounce their name properly, but they are shutting down as well. So, they did not want to compete with each other, and now that there is that gap for the city of Rochester and Syracuse, they want to fill that void for all of the businesses here and prevent any logistics problems in this area. Other than that, that is pretty much just the gist of what they do and who they want to be for this town. The site plan that's in your application is that we are going for a special use permit for this site to operate this facility. The building that's there is currently used as Boliva Concrete, which does a lot of pre-cast infrastructure, manholes, catch basins, the works like that. There is no plan to alter the site in any fashion for this SUP, as in, the site is going to plan to be as-is, the building as-is, the parking lot as-is. On that site plan, you can see that our building is not in any flood plains, is not going to have any issues in terms of wetlands where the building currently is. And since that plan came out, we noticed that the old shed, you'll see a shed to the southwest of the main building, that shed is no longer there. It was a very old, very poorly put-together sheet metal building, that building is gone. It is not going to be used for any purpose. And the building itself is about 8,388 square feet, is what I believe it is, consisting of primarily a shop area internally, two garage doors, all work is done inside, a 588-square-foot office area. Since the letter from Lou, we found that the office area was about 588 square feet. We were able to receive the original plans approved by the town that showed this, and then a unfinished storage area in the building as well. Otherwise, I have the comment letter from Lou, if that is going to be the questions, I could read them off and provide a response if you'd like. I apologize that I did not get a formal letter to you, I was in receipt of this letter yesterday. So, number one, the parking requirements. As per the submitted letter of intent, the facility is used primarily for the maintenance and repair of large trucks and trailers. Therefore, parking requirements will be based on the requirements for office space and the number of service bays and/or number of technicians, being that we noted there's enough space in there for about seven service bays, given the size of the trucks, some will be small, some will be large. We assume you can fit about seven at a time. And the building size being 8,388 square feet, that the office space is not going to be 1,000 per the letter, we found, and I have the plans here if anyone would like to see them, Mr. Wenzunreid, if you would like to see them, that it's going to be about 588, so that changes these calculations by only two spaces. The email received from Lou was End of Business Friday, we spoke with the client and got some of this information, and per the town code, going through all of those things, I don't, if you'd like me to read it, I can, otherwise I can just get to the end. The received building layout showed 528 square feet of office, 888 square feet of unfinished storage space, therefore, we would end up having 20 total required spaces. Per the 1980 site plan done by the town, there was 21 on-site, so we are still within the amount of spaces that are already on-site. The second comment was to provide the following information, is there an existing oil-water separator? To our knowledge, there is no oil-water separator on-site. The sanitary service for that building that goes to Paul Road is for domestic waste only, it's just connected to the men and women's bathrooms and the floor drains in those bathrooms. The floor shop space itself, to our knowledge, does not have shop drains. There is no floor drains in that concrete, that any oily waste or anything like that can get to that sanitary service at all, as currently, as it stands. The client plans to return to the board at some point for a site plan application for any changes they may need to make to the site. We don't want to pretend like that's not going to happen, but for tonight, for this special use permit, there is no planned changes to the site. They're just looking to see if the town will allow them to operate this kind of facility at the site. Is there any existing tanks on-site for the storage of petroleum-based products? There are currently no tanks on-site. However, the client does plan to place oil tanks on-site for the purpose of maintaining these vehicles, fluids for the vehicles, oil, stuff like that. And they are more than happy to comply with the Town of Chi-Li for any paperwork or any submitted forms that we need for the town to have on record for those tanks and whatever you guys would require for those. The only other thing on here was that the future expansion may, of the existing parking area, may require Planning Board approval. In addition, if it goes to one acre in size, we would need a SWIP. Again, at this time, we don't plan to change the site in any way for the special use permit. Everything would be left as-is. The amount of parking that we have on-site does fall within the 21 that are currently on-site, and there's not going to be a massive fleet of vehicles left on-site for an additional amount of parking. A lot of this site is gravel, where they store all of the current infrastructure that's sitting out there, all the old manholes, catch basins that Boliva made, and we're not planning to alter any of that in any way, we're going to leave it as-is. So, other than that, our conclusion is, with Boliva shutting down, it's going to become an abandoned building unless someone comes in. With Deckeroy, again, apologize if I pronounced that wrong, shutting down as well, there's going to be a gap in service to so many of these businesses, and Miller Truck Leasing wants to come in and fill that void, not only for this site to not become an abandoned site, but for Rochester as a whole to have this truck leasing that most businesses rely on, that don't have their ability to maintain trucks themselves. Otherwise, their facilities and trucks are all neat and clean, every, like I said, everything is three years' average age, and we don't propose any changes on-site at this time, but otherwise, we're more than happy to answer any questions you have.
What are your hours of operation?
Their hours of operation are typically a nine to five. Actually, I believe it might have been in the letter to Mr. Wenzunreid, I apologize that I don't have that on me, but I believe Mr. Miller may have put that in the letter to you.
Six to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Saturday.
Thank you.
And, any trucks that are serviced, that are left overnight, are inside?
Any trucks that are being serviced are going to be inside that building with that space. There may be vehicles left outside, however, there's not going to be a massive fleet of vehicles like at a U-Haul or a Penske facility where they're just lined up.
Okay.
There would only be vehicles that are needing service, and they want to get them back to the client as soon as possible.
You stated that there'd be no building changes right now, but I mean, does this thing actually have overhead doors and what?
It does.
Access to everything you need to do without physically changing anything?
Yes. That large shop has two large overhead doors to get in and out. There's one on the south side and one on the west side.
All right, exterior lighting, is it your plans on putting that in?
There's exterior lighting already on the building. If they were to add any exterior lighting, it would just be a wall pack over the door for security purposes.
And you stated that the parking area now is gravel?
Parking area, a lot of that predominantly in the back is gravel and just compacted soil, that's just been driven on, left infrastructure on it for however long Boliva's been there.
Clean up all the paraphernalia, that's laying around from the previous business.
From, from Boliva? I more than imagine they would clean that up, I mean, like I said, they like to maintain a very clean facility. I do not know if Boliva is responsible to remove that as part of their agreement to buy the property, however, I promise they are not going to leave a massive storage of old manholes and catch basins sitting there rotting in the back.
Well, I would like to see the gravel loose cleaned up and somehow, you know, not necessarily permanently striped, but temporarily striped, so these trucks have got some semblance of order, not just stacked up all over out there. Because I don't know, you know, one night you might have two out there, and the next night you might have 15, anybody's guess right now, I guess.
The nice thing about how this site is laid out is that the office space and the office parking is up in the front by Paul. All the other area in the back is very far back behind the building, so there won't be, even if there is a couple vehicles there to be repaired, they're not lined up near Paul, they are very far back behind the building.
The shed that you made mention to was actually, I think, the building where they originally started their business.
Oh, the old, the old building to the southwest of the corner?
You said that's down now, is that area cleaned up and parkable, or?
From what we saw, that building is gone.
All right, that's all I've got for right this morning.
Nothing at this time? Paul? All right. This time I'll open the public hearing portion of this application. Done. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing portion of the application.
Second?
Yes.
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 Also vote yes?
I got one more question.
So do I.
I think you got overlooked over there. Do you have some sort of emergency spill plan? I mean, granted you said there's no oil separator in there, but what happens when somebody's got a truck in there, they're working on the thing, and that's, you know, the guy accidentally drops a fuel tank or something on the floor, you got 20 gallons of diesel rolling around in there, I'm assuming you have some sort of emergency plan?
Yeah, a company of that size and the amount of fleets and offices they maintain, they will have to have something just to maintain the amount of material and oils and stuff that they maintain at all their facilities. I don't have it on me, however, I can have Miller Truck Leasing provide that to the town if you wish.
The fire marshal in the town will.
Same as with the application for any tanks that are going to be on-site? Absolutely.
Paul?
Fencing?
I do not believe there's any plan for fencing at this time. Nothing for the special use permit.
Any other discussion? Any other comments?
I had a quick question, so, Rochester and Southern, is that an active area?
Rochester and Southern?
Yeah.
Yes.
There is. Based on where the, I'm just realizing that based on where the property lines are, appears at the entrance road to the property, most of it's actually in Rochester and Southern. Do they have a view?
For that to be on their property?
Is there an access to it?
I don't know if there is one, however, that access has been there for a very long time, but it could have been so long ago that someone didn't write it down, or it's could be lost somewhere at the county clerk. We can definitely look for it, happy to, but I do not know off the top of my head if there is one with the clerk.
With that, I'll make a motion to declare the board lead agency as far as seeker, and based on the evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine the application to be an unlisted action with no significant environmental impact.
Second?
Yes.
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 Also vote yes? As far as conditions, conditions for the application, Town Engineer and Commissioner of Public Works should be given copies of any correspondence with their approving agencies. The applicant shall comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments. Building permits shall not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. Application is subject to all required permits, inspections, and code compliance regulations. Application, applicant to comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the town fire marshal. Any signage change shall comply with the town code, including obtaining signed permits. Any other conditions?
No outside storage of parts and materials, I would think. I honestly believe there should be some sort of a number put on the amount of vehicles that's going to have over there. I don't want to show up somewhere and find out that 100 trucks parked over there. I mean, you made mention, I pulled a number, I want to call what you did say you have over there, I hand it to us all.
Apologies, say that again?
Just, I'm trying to get a grasp on the number of trucks you would have over there at any one time parked outside.
Being, being that it's just a maintenance facility, I mean, change, when you have all the equipment, changing the oil on one of those trucks doesn't take very long, and getting it back to the client's very important, especially if they only rent one or two vehicles to get it in and out, move all their equipment.
How do you get these to these clientele, though? I mean, do they sit on, on your yard, and somebody can come in and look at them, or do they order them through an ordering system, and then they bring them into you?
Like, just like that. You would, there's not going to be a fleet of vehicles to say, hey, here, they're all blank, they're all white, we'll paint it with your logo, and then it's yours. If you need a vehicle, a lot of them have agreements with companies like this, they'll bring in a vehicle for you, they'll paint it with your logo on it, it stays on your property, and then when it needs maintenance, it comes to the lease center. They fix it and bring it back to you.
All right, so at any one given time, how many trucks would you have that are being serviced parked outside this facility?
That would entirely depend on how many clients use Miller Truck Leasing, and then if any of them fall under, hap, or just happen to need a brake change, or tire rotation, or an oil change, at the same time. I mean, it could be zero for many, many days, and then five could come in one day, and then get them out in 24 hours.
So, if somebody was to say that there'd be allowed 15, just, and I'm shooting it off the wall here, I don't know what everybody else is thinking, but 15 trucks parked outside at any one given point?
I would hesitate to agree to limiting them to a number. I understand, I understand your concern with not wanting too many there, but I would hesitate to limit them to a number of vehicles to be parked at one time, mainly because if they do need that lineup, because of the amount of indoor spaces to work on the vehicles, I would hate to force them to say, we, we can't accommodate it, or like, it has to stay, if a vehicle's broken down on the street and they have to bring it in because something happened to it, they're not allowed to bring it in. You get what I mean? Like, under, like, a bad, a bad scenario, someone, a car got in an accident, or someone ran over something and three of his tires popped, and we say, oh, we can't bring it in.
Same token, you can understand, you got broken vehicles starting to mount up, and the next thing you know, you got 20 of them out there with the parts missing off.
Exactly, understood. You don't want to, you don't want to see a vehicle sitting there waiting to be repaired.
Am I thinking into this too much?
I think the nature of the business is, let's get these vehicles back as quick as we can, we don't want them sitting around. It's a pretty large piece of property, I wouldn't want to even try to guess it, you know, how many tractor-trailers, how many box trucks, how many cars, based on the size of the property, do we want to permit? I think it would be almost impossible for us to guess, or put a reasonable number on that, you know what I mean? Just because of the nature of the business.
You, they're limited as to how far back they could go.
Right. Based on the size of the property.
You could limit it to the gravelled area, parking of trucks will only be limited to the existing gravelled area, and then have the applicant submit a parking plan. Outline them, outline them on the, on the property, this is how many spaces we got, we run with that.
So, would you like, you'd like them to submit a parking plan?
Sure. Submit a parking plan. Using the existing gravelled area, and make that prior to the issuance of a building permit, because they will need a building permit. That's, of course, if the board's amenable to that.
Any else? So, what I have is submit a parking plan to the Chi-Li Building Department outlining the number of vehicles to be parked in the existing gravelled area on the property.
Understood and accepted.
With those conditions, is there anything else? With those conditions, the application of Miller Transportation Group, Mark Miller, 1824 Route 38, Lumberton, New Jersey, 08048, Boliva Concrete Products Inc., PO Box 24581, Rochester, New York, 14624, owner, for preliminary site plan approval of a special use permit to allow an operation of a large trucking rental leasing company at the property located at 245 Paul Road, Rochester, New York, 14624 in the LI District.
Second?
Yes.
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 Also vote yes, this is approved?
Thank you all.
Second?
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Also vote yes? This is approved?
Thank you all.
Second?
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Also vote yes? So, with those conditions as read, the application of Crown Castle USA Inc., Verizon Wireless, for Angeles Way, Burlington, Connecticut, 06013, for approval to amend a special use permit granted in 1997 to allow a cell tower extension to property located at 25 Rock Island Cell in FPO FW PRD districts.
Good evening, members of the board.
Mr. Chairman, it's my attention recruits myself from this application, as I presently am, I'm still in Crown Castle.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Jared Lusk with the law firm of Nixon Peabody, representing Crown and Verizon Wireless on this application. Pretty straightforward, Verizon and Crown are proposing to attach a 10-foot extension to the existing 120-foot tower, plus a 5-foot lightning rod on top of the 10-foot extension, and for Verizon to install a wireless telecommunications facility, antennas on the, on the extension, as well as equipment into the, onto the ground into a 12-by-30 extension of the compound located at the base of the tower. And as Chairman Ian described, it'll require an amended special use permit, site plan approval from the Planning Board. Project's pretty straightforward in terms of the application. I, no, I submitted that, I don't know that I need to go page by page. I do note that it, as outlined in the, in the application, it is a eligible facilities request under federal law. With that, I'll turn it over to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Clark. I have no questions.
No questions.
Side table, any questions? This time I'll open the public hearing, comments from the public. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing portion of the application. Second?
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
I also vote yes. Again, I think it's pretty straightforward, everything is below the thresholds as outlined in the packet for the extension of the antenna. So, as far as conditions go...
I was hoping you forgot it.
Is there, um, is there any requirement, Paul, is there any requirement for them to go in front of the zoning board? So, I mentioned in the engineer...
Have me there in two weeks.
Okay. All right, so then, for the conditions, I have applicant shall comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments, all previous conditions imposed by this board that are still pertinent to the application remain in effect. Building permits should not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. Application is subject to all required permits, inspections, and code compliance regulations, pending approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals and all required variances. Applicant to comply with all conditions of the Zoning Board of Appeals as applicable. Applicant to comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the town fire marshal, and if there's any signage change, shall comply with town code, including signed permits. Any other conditions? As far as seeker goes, I'll make a motion, declare the board lead agency as far as seeker, and based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine the application to be unlisted action with no significant environmental impact. On second?
Second.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
I also vote yes. So, with those conditions as read, the application of Crown Castle USA Inc., Verizon Wireless, for Angeles Way, Burlington, Connecticut, 06013, for approval to amend a special use permit granted in 1997 to allow a cell tower extension at property located at 25 Rock Island Cell in FPO FW PRD districts.
Yes. Yes.
I also vote yes. This approved? located at 25 Rock Island Cell in FPO FW PRD Districts.
Yes.
Yes. I also vote yes. This is approved?
Thank you. Jared, like the jeweler, J-A-R-E-D, last name Lusk, L-U-S-K. Have a great night.
Thanks. Thank you, you too. Royal Business, application of Smettle Holding LLC, owner, 50 Staplegate Crossing, Webster, New York, 14580, owner, for preliminary site plan approval of a proposed roadway and supporting infrastructure at property located at 3513 Union Street, North Chilai, New York, 14514, in the GI District.
Morning. Good evening, everyone. My name's Sean Condon. I'm a senior project engineer with DDS. I'm here representing Smettle Holdings on the Black Creek Industrial Park project. As you guys are all well aware, this project includes a public roadway, water and sewer infrastructure, and a dedicated stormwater management facility for an eight-lot subdivision. Since its original submission, the design has been improved pretty well. Since the revision to the now-approved subdivision, we've centralized the stormwater management facilities to four areas between two lots, and we've maximized the sizing of these facilities to handle maximum build-out per town code. We have also incorporated tip-out gutters to reduce the amount of stormwater infrastructure conveying to the stormwater management areas. We received comments from Lou Engineering today. We've had a chance to review said comments and found that they're mostly technical in nature, do not present any significant planning concerns. With that being said, we're looking to obtain approval from this planning board tonight. There was one item on the comment letter that we would love your input on regarding street trees. We agreed that street trees on future lots would not be required. It would be the responsibility of future lot development, but between the start of New York State DOT and to the first lot, it was commented that street trees would be required on either side of the road. We can accommodate that on the north side for sure, but on the south side, we have conflicts with water main and a small roadside ditch. So I just would like to put on that. Just to see how we want to do it going forward, so we can see water being in connection and come along the south side, or it may be right outside that road. So, street trees would possibly cause a conflict down the road.
Wouldn't they run right along the edge of the road, the water main?
It's just outside the edge of the road.
How much property do you own for the edge of the road?
We own about, probably 15 feet to that, from, once the case kind of is wide up here, so there's room in line to a cluster, and then it's probably 15 feet to the edge of the right away.
You want to see some sort of landscaping?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Cluster at the beginning, both sides. I don't know, 15 feet out, just for the water main, that's what, eight feet down in the ground?
Right, so it just depends on, you know, your size of your trees, so we can definitely-
Those street trees are generally fairly small trees, right?
Yeah, probably accommodate it to a certain extent. You just want to avoid anything, especially with the ditch there. So, we're gonna probably plant them closer to the property line, if that's the case.
Okay, so it's the, the ditch is immediately starts at the roadway?
The ditch is in the center line, the center line between the right away and the pavement.
How deep is it?
It's probably two, two feet, not even. No, it's like a foot and a half. So, it's pretty wide, yeah.
Small swale. Anything else to present?
No, that was, that was really it. A lot of them, like I said, were pretty technical in nature. No serious concerns, everything we feel like we can address pretty easily.
Last time you were here, the SWIP was the only outstanding thing. We'd had a public hearing, we closed the public hearing, and then we couldn't move forward because we didn't have a SWIP.
It was SWIP and the EAF, and we've provided both of those things, and we've actually gotten comments on the EAF, which we've revised, and I have copies here today if you need them.
I'll need the revised copy.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
You're just proposing tonight to put the roadway in, down in the cul-de-sac?
Yep, the roadway and all of the infrastructure. So, there's going to be a fair bit of grading, stormwater infrastructure, as well as water and sewer extensions. And we're current-
So, just to understand, tonight we'll be reviewing the application for that only, and we'll be doing seeker based on that only?
Correct.
So, any future development required, a new seeker application, you understand that?
Yeah, any future lot development will have to come in and go through the same process as we have.
Preliminary site plan approval?
Absolutely.
Each independent lot?
Correct, correct.
They got any leads on selling any of these yet, or?
I can't really speak to that. I know that the applicant is, you know, reaching out. It seems to be a pretty popular thing. This is actually my third industrial subdivision in like, the last year and a half, so.
That's all I hear. Questions? No questions. Any questions, Paul? Paul, any further questions? Anything from the side table?
I got a couple of conditions when you get to that point.
Okay. We already closed the public hearings, so if there isn't any other discussion, go ahead with the conditions. Did one other question. I didn't see a landscape plan. Mike, did you see a landscape plan in these set of plans? I thought you made a comment on that.
No, we didn't. So, we didn't have street trees before this. We put it on the onus of like, the future lots to be developed.
Right. So, the entranceway is almost a quarter of the way, almost a third of the way into the development.
Yeah.
So, we'd like to see a landscape plan for at least that first third.
Okay.
And, you know, even an example of what would go on those other lots, because we don't want to see a different tree on every lot, I don't think either. Or, some people might decide to do landscaping and some may not. It would be good to have a plan for what the entire street would look like.
Okay.
Even though you don't know where the curb cuts are, and we can't-
Right, so what most we can do is call it out as like, approximate, or, you know-
Or just, you know, what, you know, that there will be landscaping and then-
Yeah, or we could add a note on there saying that, like, each, like a generic note saying that each lot developer will be required to provide their own landscaping plan for their individual approvals.
Right. Yeah, we just don't want to, have this landscaping for a third of the property, then nothing needs-
Oh yeah, I get it. You don't want someone to just take it over and be like, "Well, I don't have to do it, because it's already..."
Right, okay. And on the south side of the road, we had some street trees for the north side of the road, which would be Station 1 plus 00, or Station 7 plus 50, is that accurate?
Yeah.
And those are the trees you say would not-
We can definitely accommodate those.
However, on the south side, exactly in line with that, a large street tree wouldn't work because of the drainage?
Drainage and water main.
Not so much worried about the water main as the, uh-
Sure. The only thing I'm worried about is, you know, you're gonna need, if you ever excavate around that, you're gonna need probably a 5-foot excavation, so then you have a 5-foot street tree next to your swell that takes up a lot of the way. We can definitely provide something for a review. I don't see an issue with that. It's just probably gonna-
Definitely the entranceway, though, as well. There's a wide space on both sides of that.
Definitely cluster them right there.
Something that would not impede traffic, that it's full on your road, so we don't want trees that right there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Some kind of ground cover-
Absolutely.
Designates that. Is there going to be a sign out there somewhere? Monument sign or anything?
Uh, not that, no.
Not right now, but you coming for site plan, maybe? All right, okay. Paul?
Want my conditions?
Yes.
Roadway dedication shall occur at the, at a, at a time that is acceptable to the superintendent of highways. Applicant will be responsible for all roadway maintenance and snow and ice removal prior to dedication. The state give you a build-out completion or percentage before a traffic study need to be done, or that left lane? There's a left lane going in there, so.
Right, the left lane will only have to be included once the first lot is developed. So, as part of their approval, they'll need to get a permit to do the left lane for that method.
Big ticket for the first guy.
Yep. Always put it on the first guy, right?
Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you. Do you need anything specific, like stating that the New York State DOT left lane turn is part of like, the future? I think we have it noted on the plans, because it was specific, but I'd have to double-check, but-
I can see it, that's what I was asking about, so.
Yeah. Just for the New York State, but we could, you know, it's all dependent on, you know, what you guys feel.
Left turn lane, their original traffic report indicated that once the first lot was developed-
Yeah, it would be-
Left-hand turn lane would be required.
Correct.
Correct. I think we put something like that in a condition, Mike.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
So, that was, that wasn't a recommendation, that was a requirement, right, from the state?
Yep, requirement from the state. That's why, that's why we want it as a condition. Note it now, because all these will carry forward.
Applicant shall comply with New York State DOT to provide left-hand turning lane into the property when, at the time when the first lot is approved for development. Sound good? Covers it? Any other conditions? Nothing? Okay. So, for the conditions of approval, I have, upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit a landscape certificate of compliance to the building department from a landscape architect certified that all the approved plannings have been furnished and installed in substantial conformance with the approved landscape plan. Street tree shall be installed on a portion of the new road from Station 100 plus 00 to Station 7 plus 50 on the north side of the new road. Street trees are required for the future lots once curb cuts are determined. Approval is subject to final approval of town engineer and the commissioner of public works. Town engineer and the commissioner of public work shall be given copies of any correspondence with other approving agencies. Applicant shall comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments. Copies of all easements associated with this project shall be provided to the assistant town council for approval, and all filing information, i.e. library and page number, shall be noted on the mylars. All necessary parties executing any and all agreements necessary to extend the Gates-Chile-Igden Sewer District to cover this application, or to create a new district prior to the signing of mylars. Town will require the applicant to enter into a stormwater control facility maintenance agreement with the town, and to provide access to the easement to the town. The assets, the asset easements and the stormwater control facility maintenance agreement will need to be reviewed and approved by the Department of Public Works and the planning board attorney, and then filed with Monroe County Clerk's Office prior to the signing of mylars. Building permits should not be issued prior to the applicant applying to a law condition. Application is subject to all required permits, inspections, and code compliance regulations. Now, does Zoning Board of Appeals need to go for anything on this? Okay. Applicant shall comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the town fire marshal. Any signage change shall comply with the town code, including obtaining signed permits. Roadway dedicate, roadway dedication at a time that is acceptable to the superintendent of highways. Is that the full condition, Paul?
Say it again?
Road, roadway dedication at a time that is acceptable to the superintendent of highways?
Roadway dedication shall occur at a time that is acceptable to the superintendent of highways.
Okay. Okay, roadway dedication shall occur at a time that is acceptable to the superintendent of highways. Application, applicant shall be responsible for all snow removal and roadway maintenance prior to dedication. Applicant shall comply with the New York State DOT requirement to provide a left-hand turning lane into the property at the time when the first lot is approved for development. With those conditions, the application of Smettle Holding LLC, owner, 50 Staplegate Crossing, Webster, New York, 14580, owner, for preliminary site plan approval of a proposed roadway and supporting infrastructure at property located 3513 Union Street, North Chilai, New York, 14514, in the GI District. Yes.
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 I also vote yes, this is approved?
Okay. A quick question, just because I'm not as familiar with working within this municipality as others. So, now we have preliminary site plan approval. What's getting final site plan approval? Does that come with another meeting, or is that administratively?
It does. Are we comfortable providing final tonight for the roadway?
If he paid for it-
He did?
If he liked to, he can ask for the waiver of final.
I would like to ask for the waiver of final.
So, with those conditions stated for this application for a preliminary site plan approval, with the waiver of final, we'll have a vote and the waiver of final. Second?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes, so preliminary and final has been approved.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your guys' time. Have a good night.
Thank you. For discussion, the Royal Car Wash Development, 2851 Monroe Road Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14618 Rochester, New York, WLLC 65530 Avenue, 428 New York, New York, 10017, owner for a special use permit to allow a car wash, property located at 3127 Chile Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14624, in the GB Districts.
Hello again, everybody. Again, my name is Austin Goodwin, representative of Passaro Associates. With me tonight is Alex Benoit, representative of Royal Wash Development. And Royal Wash Development has partnered with Go Car Wash, hence why they are the developers of the site. Go Car Wash is going to be the one who runs and operates the site. As the application said, this is for the abandoned, oh, I should say vacant, property located at the corner of Chile and Paul Road. That site used to be a Walgreens. It has been vacant for some time, starting to see decay, and, and a site that we wouldn't want to have in such a major, important part of town. What Royal Wash Development would like to do is come into this site and breathe new life into this building. I'm sure you've seen many other Royal Car Washes or Go Car Washes around the city of Rochester. I'm sure you know what they look like. This one's going to be different. This one is going to take the existing facility and put everything inside of it with a major renovation of the interior. So, we have a couple pictures to show you what the building looks like over on the left and the site here on the right. What they would like to do here is we are going to minimize ground disturbance to this site. So, the building itself will remain. The pond facility will remain. The curb cuts to Chile and Paul will remain, as is the amount of impervious overall, the fencing, the existing trees. We're not cutting any of them down. The gardens will remain. They'll be cleaned up, of course, because they've been sitting there for a while, but all of the gardens, all of that will remain. The amount of work that would be done primarily to the site would be restriping the existing park- The amount of work that would be done primarily to the site would be restriping the existing parking lot to our needs. And the only amount of disturbance would be down here where the pay booths go and adding curb and a stone garden, leading people into the tunnel. Reason for that is it's much easier to guide cars into the tunnel when you have a curb there versus just a bunch of striped pavement to help people line up with the correlator pit automated travel system for the vehicle. In terms of signs, the existing monument sign will stay the same. The site already has a variance for how many signs can be on the building. Do not plan to add any more than what Walgreens had. In fact, the signs, overall signage would be, I believe, as you said, would be less, or it wouldn't be the massive size of all the Walgreens signs. It would be your typical-sized signs that are on the GoCarWashes you see around town. The building itself, what would happen is the building facade would all remain the same, but it would get four overhead garage doors. How that would work is, and in order to explain, may I leave the podium to go over there and point? Or would you like me to ask Alex to do it?
You can talk.
So what Alex is standing next to is a view of the site. From Chile Ave. And you can see that the old pull-up for the pharmacy is still there. You can see that the north side of the building, what would happen is based on the site plan here next to me, is that vehicles could line up and start stacking after they come in from Chile or from Paul and go around the site. We're going to have our three stacking lanes. I'm sure you've seen them before at any other car wash. It allows for a lot of vehicles to stack up. The amount we have on-site here is a vast amount of area that no vehicles are going to be causing issues on Chile Ave or Paul Road. And vehicles would, after they go through the pay booths, all start alternating based on the gates allowing people in one at a time to prevent any stacking issues, come around the corner and enter into an overhead garage door that would be put into the existing facade. The correlator pit and the car wash tunnel would be built inside the existing building, and a new garage door coming out of the car wash would come out on the Chile Ave side. If people want to go to garages, there will be a left turn to a second garage door. That garage door will be more or less where the pharmacy pull-up booth was. People can enter into that, and all of the vacuums, all the vacuum stalls will be inside the building. They won't be outside with those typical booths like you've seen at other ones. It'll all be inside the existing Walgreens, or I should say vacant building that used to be a Walgreens. After that, there will be another overhead door for people to leave, and they can turn right and they can take a right-out-only onto Paul, or they can go back around the site to the long driveway that leads to Chile Ave. There is, again, no proposed changes to those curb cuts. We will not be asking for a left turn onto Paul. We will not be asking to alter any of those curb cuts in any way. We want to minimize the amount of disturbance to this site. Leave it as much as it is as possible, minus, of course, cleaning it up. And most of our work would be on the inside of the building. There will not be a lollipop sign, probably like the one you've seen farther up 33A. It will be the existing monument sign that the previous client used on-site. Otherwise, for conceptual review, we would love to get your opinions. We'd love to know what you think and have a discussion with you on if there anything you would like to see from this project? Or are you happy that the amount of stuff we're trying to keep and keep existing trees, keep mature vegetation? To see what you think. So I'm sure me and Alex can answer any questions you guys would have.
Do they have any other facilities where you've done this?
Do you... Oh, sorry, Alex.
I know we have no facilities where we can, existing building can fit a car wash.
That's why I'm excited for it. I think that's pretty neat.
I'm just concerned about noise for the neighbors around.
And that was one thing I like about this a lot is the vacuums are inside. It's going to be, it's a fully insulated building. Then what they're going to do is the garage doors are there, the correlator pits inside this large building. The vacuums are inside, so it's unlike any of the other car washes in Rochester. Even of all the brands you've seen pop up in the last few years, it's all inside.
On that side of the car wash, the exit is, there is this pond and all the existing vegetation. I think it's about 250 feet from closest house. And there's about 150 feet of very tall, thick vegetation in between the two sites.
And because we're not adding any impervious to the site, we don't need to modify the pond. It's all existing. It's all currently there under any agreements that are with the town for stormwater. We don't need to go cutting any of that down. It can all stay there. Which is not only great for construction to keep it easier to stay quiet during construction for those neighbors, but long-term operation of the site. All that mature vegetation will stay.
Are there any structural issues inside that existing building you're going to have to compensate for?
None that we've found so far. We've gone through the site in detail with our construction team. Haven't found any issues with the existing building.
I'm assuming most of the slab will have to come up for drains and all that other.
In the car wash side, we're going to remove the entire slab hereover. On the vacuum side, we're only going to remove a strip in the center, just to put in a trench strip.
Just put in what? So if any vehicles are still wet from the wash, anything, I'll drink of that.
So if you've got, you said you had three stacks coming down the side of the building, right?
Yes, right here on the east side.
What happens some Saturday afternoon, the guy gets in line, he's crammed into the middle of his thing, realizes that he doesn't have his wallet, gotta go home and get some... How'd he get out of there?
So there is always an employee, apologies, Alex, I know that question. There is always employees on-site to help people, mainly to help them operate the booths if they're new to using these booths. And what they can do is if you pull up and you say, "I'm sorry, I no longer want to go through the car wash," the employee is able to open the gate for you. And you can see the striped area, these are just cones. And they can move the cones and allow you to exit without you having to go through the car wash.
Go around the side of the building.
Yes, so if you were in line and you suddenly said, "I don't want a car wash anymore," once you get to the pay booth, the employee will let you through. You don't have to pay for it. They'll move the cones, and you can go right out around the building and go.
After I've gone through the car wash and I'm coming up out by the...
After you've gone through here and you're up here now?
What happens to the crossover at the entrance road there? Because you've got traffic coming back down right at you in that...
You mean like if there's vehicles trying to come this way, come this way, and come out?
Well, to go to Chile.
They're going to pop that...
This exit, yeah. They will have to, you know, allow someone to cross. This is a dual-access road. So they will have to cross there. Someone will have to let them through if they're trying to get out on the Chile Ave. Or they can choose to go back up Paul Road to make the right on Chile Ave.
If there were that amount of traffic in which with three lanes moving as fast as one of these car washes can move cars through, that if there was that many vehicles backed up, one of the employees would go out there in direct traffic at that intersection to prevent like a stacking of people. There is more than one employee that can operate one of these and still help people at the pay booths.
On busy days like that, we can't have up to 16 people on the side.
Sure you're aware of the fact the right-in, right-out thing down there, I'll bet you seven, eight, 10 times a day, people jump in and come right around and go back down Paul Road.
Yes, it's a common...
Not the last three to four years.
No, no, because they know you're smart, right? And you could sit there and watch them do it all day long.
That's something we've gone with the New York State DOT for a variety of projects, well beyond just car washes. That's a very common question for most towns. It's a completely justifiable question for most towns that right-in, right-out, people will break the law. Unfortunately, there's only so much we can do. We can angle people as hard as we can. We can put bull noses in that only a truck is going to be able to hop that curb. But at the end of the day, we can try our best to make people follow it, but I can't stop people from breaking the law. But we can try our best to leave, and we're going to leave it as-is, how it currently stands. And if people do want to try to take a turn and go left, there's, unfortunately, the only answer I have is there's only so much we can do about that.
If you say Walgreens, they made it pretty uncomfortable already. You can see the truck around the curb.
Yeah, it's not the easiest right-in, right-out to do. It's not a right-in, right-out that's labeled right-in, right-out, but actually isn't. It is a right-in, right-out. Unless you have a truck, you're not hopping that curb without car damage.
It's an interesting proposal, I tell you. If it gets through, I tell you, it'll be very interesting to see it out together.
As would I.
Do you remember if the state required that or did the planning board require that?
I think we did.
The reason I ask that is sometimes when you angle it that hard, people are going to turn left anyways. It's even more dangerous because now they really can't see very well when you pull out onto the road. There's this, removing the curb, putting in striping. And if they're lined up properly and they turn left, they turn left. I'd just be curious to know, people come in on Chile Avenue, just how many would want to make a left-hand turn? How bad is it really there? Because, I don't know, that road just hasn't gotten as busy as I remember in the past for some reason. I don't know why, but I don't know that it would be that big of a deal. I guess I would want an opinion from either the, I think that's County Road now, Paul? Does it have County Road now? Did the county take that over?
Yes.
You know, an opinion from the county traffic engineer as to whether they would want to force only left-hand turns or tee that off and let people turn left or right.
So you mean that you would want to see if the county would like to alter that curb?
I would like to know what their opinion is, yes.
Okay, just get their opinion?
Yes.
Okay.
I see these all over, and they do. People just drive over curbs and drive over plants and drive over everything because they want to go left. And sometimes I wonder if that creates a bigger problem and is more dangerous than if you just let them turn left. So I'd like to get the opinion of a traffic engineer on that. If you could contact Monroe County DOT to get their opinion on this before you come back.
I can more than happily contact Mr. Harris over at DOT.
I gotta think it's, when I saw the application, I thought, who drives down the road and looks at an old Walgreens? And said, boy, they'd make a great car washer. I applaud you for your imagination, I guess, or your creativity on this. So nothing on the exterior of the building, with the exception of the addition of overhead doors, is going to change? Is that correct?
That is, yes. Unless there is any like broken wall packs or missing wall packs for security lighting at doors. Otherwise, the building's going to look how it looks.
Everything's going to remain, the peaks, the...
Yes.
Dormers, everything's going to remain there. The outside look with the columns will remain there. Okay. The other thing that was mentioned, I forget who mentioned it, but the noise factor. I think it's great to have the vacuums inside. They'll all be self-service, right? There's no car dollop service inside, or will there be?
What is car dollop?
Well, like if there's somebody that actually...
He means you don't do a Delta does.
Instead of you vacuuming it yourself.
No, yeah, it's all...
It'll all be self-vacuum, okay. Even if it's inside, especially with the blower at the end of the car wash, they are quite noisy. That's fortunately probably the furthest part from the residents. But I would love to know if you could give us a decibel reading at the property line?
We have some.
You know, it sounds that that'd be great relative to what a lawnmower might sound like, or even just, you know, what that would be for people that would be sitting in their backyard.
A great thing for this site that, Alex, will you flip to the other one? Great thing for this site is at the end of the tunnel where the vacuums are, there is a retaining wall down there. So right here is a retaining wall. It's not an extremely tall retaining wall, but even so, going up a few feet, that does help a lot, especially with some of the mature trees that are on-site.
Not so much concerned with the interior vacuums as the, when you're exiting.
Yes.
The blower that blows off your...
Yes, and that's right here, and you face north, and then that's when you hit the retaining wall.
Does your facility have a door that closes and opens when people come out?
Not, it doesn't do it in between every car. It will do it after, you know, a car leaves and it's open for a minute, but not in between each car.
And it doesn't open until the car gets to the end?
Basically, halfway.
It's always open. It doesn't close?
It doesn't close.
It's always open. So that's what we're looking for, is that sound. Cars exit after their car's been washed and the blower dries it off. That sound level to the property. The retaining wall will actually probably make it bounce off and make it sound even louder. So that's why I would like to see what that reading is going to be at the property line for all of the neighbors to the east.
Oh, for everyone in here?
Right, that's what I'm concerned about, not Chile Avenue or...
So your request is an actual sound study on the property?
For the particular machinery that you use.
For that distance.
I'm sure they give, the specification you get, this is the decibel, because they wear headsets, right?
I absolutely have that. So you just want to see it for the distances?
Right, so at the machine, this is what it is, at the other side of the driveway, at the other, you know, to the property line. So we can get an idea on what the neighbors are going to hear.
I absolutely have it. I just don't have it with all the vegetation.
Yeah, that's going to be the thing, is all that vegetation is of course going to take it down.
I have one for a wide range.
The other item is the three booths that are, you know, welcome to, can be very loud as well. I may have been another, they can be very loud. So I just want to be sure that that also doesn't bleed off into the neighbor's yard there, right directly to the east.
You mean like the welcoming voices on the booths?
Welcome to this, please insert, do this, do that. You know, it gives you instructions when you pull up to the gate. Or if you have an automatic, when it just says, "Thank you for using GoCarWash," and the gate opens, right? Because those are loud as well. It may not seem like it if you're there and everything else is working, but if you're in your backyard trying to enjoy the quiet day, I'd love to know what's...
That one I don't have, that's the first request I've had, but I can certainly...
Right. Or they could, I mean, it doesn't need to go beyond two feet for a person to car. Doesn't have to go 50 feet.
Was there any consideration of flipping the operations? Wash on the west side, backs on the east? Because that would alleviate Mr. Hellaby's concern of egress and ingress and cross-traffic on the north end.
It would, but you would also line up with Paul.
Also move those three on the other side, the three kiosks on the west side. And you still have that queuing that runs from north around to the west.
So if someone at Paul Road would just come in, would you just be letting the booths over on this side?
I think it might even deter people from coming in off of Paul Road, which is the bonus in it all.
Is the issue people coming in off Paul Road or people going out to Paul Road?
They're going out, going out and exiting to the west, right?
If they, or they could jump the curb and go left?
That also helps you when that employee has to move the cones that's right there. Move the cones, pull, and guys, you know.
We will start again, it's also a little bit more of a priority.
Right, you're less apt to have noise from the back, because the back isn't used as much as the wash, right? Wash is in a constant state of running. So that noise is then separated even further, pushed further to the west.
I mean, the biggest concern is going to be the noise. So based on that, you can figure out which way to configure your building, but Paul's point, the further away you can get that noise from those neighbors, the better off the application will be. Because everything else is all pretty much commercial for the east and the west. For the west and the south.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any issue with it, but...
Yeah, we can definitely take a look at it, for sure.
So all this parking spaces around the outside edges with AV? Would you have a designated employee area and for people to come in to buy things? And then would the rest of the striping just be removed?
There is...
Would you put in driveline striping?
There is nothing for sale. You can go into the office to purchase a membership, but there is no third-party selling. There's no buying of this car fresheners or anything like that. There's no detailing work. There's none of that third-party stuff. It is come in, get your car washed. You can go use the free vacuums if you wish. You can go into the office if you have a complaint or you need to buy a membership. Otherwise, there is no third option for anything on this site. A lot of that parking is just the existing parking lot that remains. A lot of it is striped there currently, and the point was to leave that parking as-is to, well, leave it as-is.
Because it's there.
It's already there.
People do park, right, because they go in and buy memberships?
Yes.
That's why I asked my question.
Probably not 66 people, but...
Where's that parking going to be relative to the flow of traffic of people coming in and out of the car wash? And are people walking across that path? Where's the office going to be? Have you figured all that out yet, I guess?
Yeah, so the office was going to be centrally located in the middle of the building.
Okay.
You know, these parking spots would allow for that, obviously.
So you leave the parking spots against the building?
We were going to leave them all, just leave them all there.
Okay. Well, you're going to have designated like drivelines, right, for people when they come in?
Yeah, to come, we'll have arrows.
And then when they exit?
Yeah, we'll have the arrows on the side.
Oh, okay. Okay.
This hatch in here, there's actually a sidewalk there.
Yeah, it goes underneath, it's covered, isn't it? It's covered sidewalk?
Yeah, and that's all staying.
So employees will park along the building, people will exit and go behind their vehicles, basically. Okay. I forgot there was parking up against the building.
Yeah, there's parking up against the building here and the climate's just to be there.
Oh, okay. I thought it was, okay, good, good. I thought it was anything. Okay, good, good. Any other comments, questions? Michael, do you foresee any special requirements or needs from a car wash perspective for drainage or?
Are you recycling your water?
Is it a very, the percentage of the water that gets recycled through the equipment itself, but there's no specific complaint system?
I'm going to think of, they may install an oil-water separator for the waste.
Yeah, there is a plan for a 25 gallon oil-water separator.
What about the inside of the building?
It's exterior, it's over in this corner where we're going to be disturbing the site.
Typically, we use one of the traffic-rated ones and it's somewhere that most cars don't drive over it. It's not going to be right in the middle of the drivelanes, but it's usually under pavement and it's one of the traffic-rated oil-water separators.
Can't think of anything else. I think it's, I'm very interested to see what it looks like. It's created a thought. Any else in the comments, feedback? When do you plan on coming up with a preliminary site plan and coming back?
It's impossible.
You know all the timelines, right, for the dates to get into things?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can have, we have all that at the office.
Oh, that's right. Okay. All right then. Up towards the end.
All right.
Thanks for your time.
Guys, thank you very much for your time.